All of us are here. But Molly, my kids sit like you.
They don't want to hear it.
All right, we'll get started. I'll order the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five Town Decatur Board and Alder, uh, Board of Alderman.
Alderman Meadows?
Present.
Alderman Myers?
Here.
Alderman Ottinger?
Here.
Alderman Peeden?
Here.
Alderman Rowland?
Here.
Alderman Ward?
Here.
Stand for the pledge. Pledge and indication. Alderman Myers to do the indication and Alderman Ward to do the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful, beautiful tourist postcard day today here in Decatur. We ask that everything that's done and said tonight be pleasing unto you. We ask that your hedge of protection be built around our military wherever they may be in the world. And we ask that you bestow your blessings on our country, our state, our county, and our town. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Is there anybody here that wants to address the board that's not on the agenda?
I have gone about a month ago at the water plant and invoiced four hundred dollars. I got a twenty-six hundred and seventy-eight dollar and a nickel check today. Is that a tilt? The twenty-two hundred dollars is a tilt?
It was not.
Do I need to return that to you right here, right now, and y'all do something different?
We've, we've got another check cut. There was a, there was a mistake on, some miscommunication on the signing of the invoice and then that invoice didn't have a, there was, there was a, there was a mistake, so.
Appreciate you being honest, Jerry.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? All right, move on to the consent agenda items. Any discussion on previous amounts from February? No question there. We'll move on to the financial report. Any questions or discussion?
One thing I wanted to note on the financial report, so we approved, you approved the first reading of some budget amendments last month and didn't get the advertisement, we have to advertise for the, the second reading or the public hearing for an ordinance. And I didn't get that done in the, the period before this meeting that I needed to. So we will have that second reading in April. And also we will look through expenses then and if we need to edit the, if we needed to add any to that, I will, I will update that budget ordinance or budget amendment ordinance on second reading. That's why it's not on the, the second reading, it's not on this month's agenda. It'll be in April.
Any other discussion on financial? If not, we'll move on to police report. Chief Rowland, you have anything? We're going to fire Chief Franklin?
Hey, yes, I was just bringing up, we will have a pump testing coming up. I think they're gonna be here the twentieth. It seems like it was just the other day, but it's been a year. And they're gonna have to fix the stuff that we didn't get fixed over the year because we've kind of been a little tight. So I don't know yet what the invoice will be for the repairs, but we're gonna have to get the stuff. We kind of, and so I've got it worked out with a guy, he's gonna fix it before he tests it. So kill two birds with one stone. So just a heads up, that's coming. And I don't know if we'll have enough to cover it all, but I won't know until I get the invoice. That's the heads up.
How many pumps? How many pump runs or?
Uh, well, there's a engine and ladder.
All right, Rusty, you have anything? If there's no other discussion, we'll entertain motion to approve.
I'd like to mention to approve the consent agenda items.
Say like that?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Meadows? Alderman Myers? Alderman Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Peeden? Alderman Rowland? Alderman Ward?
All right, so a little communications, left on communications, moving on to attorney's report.
Mayor and officials of the town, I have been receiving information over the last couple of months of various individuals being most helpful in respect of the issues before us from time to time on the subdivision questions which arise. And I have to admit that the material that I've been receiving is a little out of my league. As an ethical obligation, I have to my clients suggest that we look for an attorney who's more knowledgeable in this area than I. It would not be fair to you if I went into this, these cases, I imagine there are a couple, where we would need the services of an attorney who's more competent in that area. Over the course of my private practice, from time to time, folks have come into the office and I tell them if it's an area of law I do not practice, medical malpractice, I'd rather give you no advice than bad advice. So tonight I say the same thing to my client, the Town of Decatur. I don't think you need me as your attorney in this limited purpose for these subdivisions. When I was in law school, I had to take property, which was a required course. I didn't like it then and I didn't like it in my practice. Did very little property work. So I understand that Ms. Barron in the, Ron County?
Ray County.
Ray County, I'm sorry. She and I have had a couple of conversations ourselves, but I understand, not from her directly, that she would be willing to assist us in this matter. And I would suggest that we seek the advice of other council to take care of our issues and our side of things.
And in your packet later where it's addressed, I didn't put the, an email and some attachments about this issue. They're on the agenda, there's the printed version and on the, on the tablet.
All right, engineer's report.
Starting up here with the ARPA funding. I had the Fort Blackwood milestone number five, it was January or May thirtieth. And that is the type of thing submitted to the GMS EAU services or ESU services for approval. That has already been completed, that was completed with the headway. So we are again ahead of that milestone, ahead of the ARPA schedule. ARPA projects, we're continuing to work on the asset management plan. Working with Laura and Rusty on getting some information for that asset management plan and continue to work through that. Sewer rehabilitation and pump station project is complete. We will get that submitted to the, to the GMS system next week. And then we should be put down here, looking to advertise and somehow that got mixed up. There'll be Sunday, March the twenty-third, advertised bid. And if everything goes well through that, we'll be presenting to the board at the May board meeting to accept a bid for that. I have talked to a couple of contractors that will be interested in the project. So I'd like to stay in front of that and make sure that, you know, it's a large enough project for somebody to take care of. The water source and treatment, Mayor and I have had conversations in the past about sourced water. And I'm waiting on further if, if you need anything else, we're, we're here to help you with that. The Clearwell project, property acquisition. I believe the mayor's been back and forth with a lawyer, I don't know if that's the same information that you're working with to get that property acquired, the CBG grant does require that property to be acquired before you can bid. ARPA does not, so we're looking to purchase property for that pump station as well. We can do that, we, we've got time, we've, we've got to have that purchased before award. So we've got, we've got time to make that happen. Let's see, the design package for the Clearwell tank was submitted on December twenty-third. As previously reported, they received some comments. We did get approval for that tank on March the third. And aside from property, that one's ready to be bid as well. Funding, it appears that the Town of Decatur had a portion of that and the Mexican is not providing that extension for their portion of the Clearwell tank. So CCI, Aaron particularly, has worked to get that application in for SRF. Yesterday? Did that get, yeah, yesterday was the deadline, she was able to get that. Just as a reminder, the town CBG grant will expire April twenty-five. And we don't anticipate any problems getting that extended.
Pushed ahead.
Oh, it's already.
Pushed ahead the day to get it extended.
Okay, that'll, that'll push it through April twenty-twenty-six. Construction of that project tends to be with bidding and everything else, roughly twelve months. Maybe get that taken down a little bit. Getting the material for the tank suppliers is a little bit of a lead time and a lot of that, so. But that is the engineer's report.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
And I don't know who's in. March, not since the last year at the meeting, it's only a year ago basically, that we needed an easement. And we're sitting a year later and we just still don't have this process.
Needing an easement.
For the Clearwell?
For the Clearwell.
Yeah, why has it taken a year?
We are waiting on an attorney to sign a pledge.
It's been an easement, back and forth, back and forth. He's supposed to file a deed this week, Mike is, but there's been a lot of back and forth with acquiring the property from Carter. We were, we originally was gonna do an easement and then Mr. Carter wanted to give us the property so that kind of restarted the process and acquiring it, going through the lawyers and stuff, it's took a lot longer than planned.
So was that our, our lawyer?
No, a lot of it was his lawyer's.
September, we were finalizing everything.
Yes.
And here we are in March.
Well, his lawyer sent me a list of ten questions last week to answer before they would finalize the deed. And so it's been, it's been a lot on that side, so. But I spoke with Mike Versteinin yesterday and he's supposed to next week get, get the deed out and then we can.
So while we're on the Clearwell, who was supposed to be in communication with the county? And how did we end up in a situation where we lost six hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
I didn't hear the first part of that conversation.
Who was supposed to be communicating with the county? Because I watched the meeting, I didn't even know that they would have a meeting. But it's like several of their commissioners said that no one's ever communicated with us. Who was responsible for that?
When Eddie received the extension letter, he called me, we discussed it. He called Evan from the state, Evan explained everything to him. And last I talked to Eddie before that meeting, he was gonna sign it and send it in. The next, next thing I know, it ended up on the county's agenda. Nobody notified me that it was gonna be on the agenda for me to be there. And that's when they voted to not sign it. And then they had the special call meeting. And the engineers showed up and answered any questions, but nobody voted to rescind that. But any questions I've ever been asked has been answered, but I have been asked very many questions or been notified that it was gonna be on the agenda. If I'd known it was gonna be on the agenda on that, the regular meeting, I would have been there, but I was, last I had talked to Eddie, he was gonna sign it and it wasn't gonna be on the agenda.
So we're saying it's Eddie's fault?
I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying it's Eddie's fault, but last I had talked to him, he was gonna sign it. And then the next thing I know, we ended up on the agenda for the commission to vote on it. So I'm not saying it's his fault, I'm just saying I wasn't notified it was gonna be on the agenda to be there to talk about it, but. Or I would have the engineers, I did have the engineers there for the special call meeting. I was out of town, I couldn't be there, so.
I went, I didn't say anything because I didn't know enough about it. I didn't realize it'd been five years that we'd been going through this process. We just have to have better communication. I would have, if I'd known, I'd have done my research, so I could have answered the questions. Our communication has got to get better all the way around.
Is there any other joint grants or anything going on? I mean, this ARPA thing, is it done? Could the county turn around and say, we don't want, let's use our ARPA funding?
So they give?
I mean, the ARPA stuff, is it falling under the same thing as the CBG?
No, they're two different ones.
Your ARPA money is, is allocated. And it is a, an act of, as, as we know, it was an act of Congress to get it from water plant to this. And now we're yet a year later, year and a half later. It is, they would not move money again, so no.
Your ARPA money has been allocated to you by contract. So I was just still, I'm trying to figure out, cause when Jerry, when you were the, when you were the public boards director, you had questioned to get that Clearwell that we had.
It was state requirement eighteen months ago.
Can you, you're my commissioner, what, what happened?
I found out that it had to be renewed, I didn't even know it. Actually, Mickie called me because he was at the mayor's office and the mayor told him it had to be renewed. And Eddie told him, he didn't want to sign it. And that's what he told us, because it's keeping Mexican from getting grants. And that's what we was told, that Eddie, he did not want to sign it. So instead of him making the decision on his own, he brought it to the board and let the board hold on it.
So basically, the grant that the county could not use decided to send it back to the?
Because we, we wouldn't be able to get a grant if, we're getting, now we're gonna pay fifty percent back, fifty percent of it. So now CBGs can be done for parks and we're trying to build parks in the north and south end. And, and if, they wanted a two-year renewal, which didn't make any sense if it's gonna be done like he said it was gonna be. Plus, that's gonna make us a fair worry of twenty-eight before we can even file for a CBG for our camp.
So the decision was made then to forego the six hundred and thirty thousand for the Clearwell for the opportunity to push up a year to get the opportunity to apply for a bid?
They wanted a two-year, oh, okay. They wanted two years for some reason, I don't know.
Is that CB?
CBG grant, they wanted a two-year extension, is what Eddie told us.
They, we, who's they?
That's what the state extended, it was two years.
The extent, the letter that they want, Eddie had to sign for a CBG was it's to extend it for two years.
But once the project was done, then y'all would be eligible to apply, even if it was early in twenty-six.
So the five hundred thousand SRF, that's a loan?
It is. We're not obligated to use it, then we're not penalized for not using it. We just, the deadline was coming up, so they put in for it, because it's not till the summer that you actually get it. But we would have applied for it, but I made sure that we weren't penalized or thought bad of by not using it. So we would have applied for it and then if we don't need it, we don't use it. It was just a, in case we need to have a notice for this project so we can finish up.
So that money goes back to the state coffers, basically. And then, and then so the city is out, or forget the city, the county, everybody's out for that six hundred thousand.
And next February, the county can apply for a CBG, it'll be on our list. And yet, you know, like, if a CBG is the same way when I used to get them, it's you get five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and pay back fifty-four thousand.
So I mean, so now where we sit is, you know, that's the thing, when I listened to that meeting and all, we are all county residents also. And we pay a percent, a pretty good percentage of the property taxes for the county. And, you know, that was money, I guess because, so I can explain to people. You're saying that because now they've opened up that type of grant, see, it's not only for infrastructure, it can be used for parks or whatever.
Yeah, but I think another part is it, it, it was already five years of CBG not been able to get, apply for them because we already had them and there's gonna be two more years.
So a requirement that we, we had to have eighteen months ago for this tank, right? And you said that was a requirement?
From the state, on our sanitary survey.
That was already approved for, y'all decided not to do on a chance of being able to, be able to get, do parks? Is that what you said, do the parks?
We're gonna get grants for the county and, and right now we wanna build two parks.
So we want to build two parks instead of having what was required for, for the water? Is that what you're saying?
We voted for what we thought was best for Mexican.
And that was not due of requirement? That was you, when you was the director, that should have been done eighteen months ago? That, that didn't say?
No, I don't know why, I'll be honest with you, I don't understand why it's not already done.
Yeah, what? All I can say is, well, I don't know, I mean, really, an opportunity to build two parks.
People already complained about their water bill prices and now we're gonna have to go up again. And they're gonna be mad at us.
And they need to.
Refer them to the county commission.
Refer them to the county commission and, and choose wisely.
And as far as I, I watched it, just like everybody else did, as far as them to say there was no representation, we had two aldermen there who were never addressed. So for them to say they had no representation from the city, nobody to talk to them, and I, and I see Connie's point, I wouldn't have been able to answer questions either, I completely understand. But to say that with two of them sitting there?
Yeah, but nobody knew more about this than Jerry probably.
And you are correct.
So you, what, what information would they need? Nobody could give more information than what Jerry could give. So, you know, therefore, I, I mean, don't matter who was there, but Jerry knows more about this than we do.
I agree with you. I just think for them to sit there and say the city had no representation when we had two people there.
I think you were talking about the first meeting, what was the first?
That's not what he said, though. He just said there was nobody there and there was. So is there a reason, Mr. Klein, that it has taken five years? Can you give us the rundown on that?
It started off as a water plant, right?
This CBG has went through six, this CBG has went through six different scopes of work, of jobs to get where it's at. It started off being, I told him at the meeting last past.
Yeah, I heard that, yes, I did. I'm just wondering whose, not whose fault that is, but whose fault that is.
Six months before I left, they was gonna core drill on the other part of the property. And that's what I'm saying, I don't know, understand why they, and they was gonna clear the woods and do core, core drilling. I don't think that's being done, has it?
I don't think it was, Jerry.
Core drilling?
Yeah, we're ready to build a tank.
Oh, okay.
Al Carter gave us some property, that's, that's why they did the core drill, because he gave us some property beside the water plant.
The original site.
What's that?
The original site was on your property.
I know what someone said.
The original site was on your property.
Okay.
And just to be frank, you just lost six hundred thousand dollars to somebody that was gonna electrify.
Do you have that timeline that Aaron took to the commission meeting?
Yep.
I know she was.
Is that the one that was emailed to us?
This is.
Oh, no, I think this might be, she had, she told me she had a timeline of everything that's happened since then.
Did you scan that and share it with us?
You need this back, you know? Okay, I'll get it back off you. It's timeline from the beginning till now of everything that's happened, but I knew she had took that to the commission meeting so she could answer any questions.
It just seems like it's taking way too long. For whoever's fault.
All right. Move on to planning commissioner report, Sean.
I did four new certified letters and one new bill from me. Y'all should all have a list of the properties that have a letter. Wayne Buzz, I wasn't able to meet in, I had a break I had to go to, but the part of me out on Brown degree, she is gonna be moving out in the next sixty days, so.
Questions, discussion?
What's your process? I mean, it's to be one of these addresses, because I don't know the address. And you've written a letter and it's sort of cleaned up and it looks better and a month later it's worse than it was?
They get another letter.
At what point do we take them to court?
After the second letter, if it's not cleaned up within thirty days after that, they get summons to court.
So.
Park's recreation?
Uh, yes, we have one. Will be, will be, the park board that we were questioning, the Board of Aldermen, to pass, accept a bid for the small tennis courts we do, then there's pickleball courts, redoing the, the big tennis courts. And also we've got a bid for the memorial area, to actually say that it's memorial, a better memorial and including the flag post for that little section. And then also we're wrapping up, getting the last of the money spent for the dollar part, to get that money back. And we also purchased for the new baseball pitching mound.
Portable pitching mound?
No, one that comes in a box and you open it up and it's pitched, no, it's dirt and everything.
I mean, a lot of people.
It's a portable, yeah.
Have you?
Is it?
Have you already purchased that?
Uh, just placed the order, it wouldn't be shipped yet, but we did look down for some prices on it. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was told that there's, that Larry Mason has twenty thousand dollars DZD money and he won't hand the money over, but anything they wanna purchase, it will, they give in the receipt and it'll be reimbursed. And it's not, you know, the, I have a, I have a hard time spending CD grant money that we work for on county projects. Because that's not a city sponsored event, it's a county event. And we saw how the county treated it.
I mean, it's, just for clarity, I mean, they're not actually county related, they're, I mean, they're in a little way. They're usually county, county property, yeah, I'm guessing, yeah.
It's, it's not Decatur.
Not a county.
DZD. It's, what is it, Mexican, I don't know.
And we'll have a, we purchased some dog leash signs, dogs on leash, under control signs. They've already been installed. And then we'll be bringing, next month, the plan is to bring the, what we're gonna put on the new signs to let y'all see and then get however we need to do an ordinance to give to police officers. If they violate the sign, if they violate the ordinance, we'll get that.
Codify some of those rules so that they can send them to court for violating them rather than just being able to point at a sign thing or park rules.
Not to be, to go to court. But where there is, they're gonna fix up Cedar Rally's baseball field, so are we gonna be purchasing things for them too?
Probably not, this is another city.
But neither is those ball fields.
No, they're in, within the city, aren't they?
No.
They're not?
No.
Oh, well.
I mean, there is, there is a. They're not on city property, but they're within the city, I mean, at the middle school, the, the middle school ball fields.
I don't.
Maybe it's not on city property, but it is, I mean, within the city.
I think it's. Are the schools, is the school even in the city limits?
I don't know, is the school on the city limits? No.
Just have a hard time, they have, they have some money in, in, we're using.
Yes, we do.
They've got, they've got pork money coming, so let them use it.
Let them use it. How much was the amount?
It was fourteen hundred dollars. They had found that, we had, we had, we were looking for ideas of how to support, you know, youth and big, that, you know, that Project Diabetes grant is about, you know, getting people active and, and we.
You and I wrote papers.
Sure, 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 I know, you know, um, and so, anyway, we were just looking around, and we did ask about, um, you know, supporting youth organizations in the county, if that was, if that was allowed, and they said it, they said it was, so that, that was their biggest need, that, um, I know, um, um.
I'd just like to see if you're for it. To not have ever come before us, and I'm, I'm only one vote. Everybody will think of it the same way you guys did.
And that's it? All right, moving on, uh, no old business, we'll start with new business. Is wayfinding signs, uh, Chrissy Kelly was here at the workshop. What, I'm sorry?
No, you were talking about the business, the, the department.
Oh, okay, I got you. Uh, she just, basically just needs board approval to put signs up for the city, so we'll just see the, make them out of seconds, do that.
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers. Alderman Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Peeden. Alderman Rowland. Alderman Ward.
All right, next is Watts Bar Utility Service Area, this is the East Ferry area. If you come and talk to us at the workshop, decide whether they are gonna continue to service it, or if we want it maxed, so it's discussion. We want back, or if we want to let them keep it. Discussion.
Now, what would be the business better, those taking that day?
Revenue in the future, when it is able to be developed, right now, they, nobody can develop in there because there's, it's, that's what the whole deal with, what Mr. Buckley was talking about, is that's, and you've got the stuff into your, where Garrett, the planner, sent out, uh, to Mr. Buckley, all the issues with the area, we can't issue building permits right now because they felt, they filed a plat that was supposed to come in front of the commission, the planning commission, that we didn't sign off on, they would have filed it anyways. And so, it falls under subdivision rules, and they have to do a lot more stuff for it to be a subdivision, and that's the letters that we, uh, want to send to the developer, uh, to try to get that straightened out, but as of right now, nothing can be built in there, except on the first four or five watts.
Has Garrett reached out to the developer?
I'm sorry?
Has Garrett reached out to the developer?
Yeah, we've talked to him a couple of times, and.
They're still.
Yeah.
Stephen, I, I have a question, because I have to own a lot there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't understand how this all happened, because I'm initially going to Watts Bar Utility, you see here? And we were, before we bought, and we were given a price for, um, septic and water, so we thought that was okay then. And we got a nine-one-one address and all, and, um, so we bought, and then when we went to apply, we were told that by Watts Bar Utility, that one of the office workers, that, oh, well, we can't do this, and even if we do, if we're forced to do it, then we're gonna charge you more than what you paid for your land, which is totally inappropriate, because why did you give us a fee and act like all this was okay? So then I don't understand how it got this far, how did it even get filed, if it wasn't, I mean, who's responsible for making sure that something's filed, has gone through the appropriate process, 'cause I feel like we're the victims in all this. So, um, now, we were told that, oh, no, you can't put a well of septic in, because that's not allowed, but yet, you know, then I was told, oh, well, there's no money, hard to tell if we have to do it, the city, when it would ever be done. So I'm, you know, I'm sitting on a piece of property that we were gonna build on this year, and it's not like I have another large amount of money just to plop on another piece of land. So does any, can anybody explain this mess to me?
The proper, the proper way that it's done is they create a plat, they bring it to the planning commission, the planning commission tells them what they need to do to fix it, and then they fix it, bring it back, and then the planning commission approves it. Well, instead of bringing it back to the planning commission, they just took it across the street to the register of deeds and filed it without a signature, which shouldn't have been signed off on over there, because it has to have a planning commission signature to be filed over there. So, it got filed over there, and then they started selling the lots.
So, was the register of deeds office responsibility, they, they owed up?
It's supposed to have a planning commission signature on it for them to file it, and, so I don't know exactly what.
Mayor, is that one time, did those people that's doing all that, did they not come to this board and pretty much said, we're gonna do whatever we wanna do, no matter what you do? So that's how come she's wound up in the situation she's in.
That's why I want to get an attorney involved to get it corrected. They had the same issue in Ray County, and the same attorney that I'm wanting to get involved, got that resolved over there, and the developers fixed everything, and then everything was fine, so. I'm trying to get, get it corrected to where it's, it should have, like we explained to them, the east that they got should be an actual road, and they should put the utilities and stuff in, and then, 'cause it falls under the subdivision rules. That's the proper way, and as far, we have no control as far as the Watts Bar Utilities, unless we decide to take it back.
What waters do you have?
I have track numbers fixed, of one lot.
Who's, did, who was your realtor?
Um, I don't remember her name last year. It's been a while since we've brought up.
Six or seven towers.
Uh, Michelle Schaffren? Did her? Swiffrich?
Jim Schaffren.
And she wasn't aware of all of this until we reached out to her, because it was like, we were told something totally different. Like I said, we did our due diligence, we went to Watts Bar Utility, and then they gave us incorrect information, apparently. So it just seems like many failures here of the system impacting many people who bought property or ready to build.
It all has to do with the road. Your, the developer has to bring that road up to fix, and give the utilities for this.
Sure, it's the one that goes behind the tower, right side of the tower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I think he should've never been able to file it without, that seems like where the error occurred, which was. Whoever allows the deed to be filed, or whatever.
I hate it for ya.
Yeah, me too.
But we've been dealing with this for, for quite a while, with the developer.
They originally sold it, claimed it wasn't inside the city, but they just, she was, so. All right, uh, any action on the service area? Moving on, uh, salary schedule, this will be in reference to the public works position. If, uh, y'all don't know, Rusty's asked to go back to the sewer plant, so, um, my option is, we've got to get a secondary person that is certified to run the water plant, so what I'm asking is to up the.
Excuse me, y'all have a something, something? Okay, sorry, I, I thought y'all were talking to, sorry.
Anyways, um, what was that? The, Rusty's asked to go back to the sewer plant, and that opens up the public works position. So, he's gonna stay in the position until we get filled, but my request is that we up the salary of the public work director's position, that make it where it has to be a certified person in running the water plant, and that be the secondary person that runs the water plant. As you know, we talked about in the workshop, that we checked around, checked around, and having a hard time finding anybody that is certified or willing to come for what we have, money-wise, so I'll leave that up to y'all, y'all wanna make that pay rate up, but we're gonna have to get that position filled up.
And so they're gonna have to hold a certification?
We've, we've got to have a secondary person to run the plant, and that's the only position we've got.
But I'm just saying, we're, we're gonna hire somebody that.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry, yes.
Okay. So you're, you're asking to up it seventy, as a maximum, that's what I'm hearing.
That was a number, a figure, by calling around and seeing what everybody else is getting, and to try to get somebody.
And we also need a vote on the clerk one, two, and three salaries, because that was in the workshop.
Unless y'all wanna change it, I will just leave that the same.
I think we need to discuss it.
I'm sorry?
I think we need to discuss it, but let's take care of public works first.
I'll make a motion that we up it to seventy.
Second.
With being certified.
Well, that's gonna be required.
Yeah, requirement, meet. Certified land operator and water distribution.
And that's the maximum, that may, may not be their starting.
Yeah, they may not be starting that, yes. Well, I'd get a little bit of that, but.
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Alderman Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Peeden.
Aye.
Alderman Rowland.
Aye.
Alderman Ward.
Aye.
All right, so, discuss the clerk one, two, and three?
Yeah, I do, I mean, a year ago, we had a conversation, many of you up here, except for Mr. Ottinger. Many of you wanted to do away with the position of the assistant reporter. Some of you wanted to get rid of the assistant reporter, you knew she was retiring, we talked about changing the duties, we've looked at that, um, that we were gonna save some money. If we're gonna leave it the same salary, then why are we doing away with assistant reporter and the qualifications? I mean, we're, we're the same place we work. So why change it? But there was not one person sitting here that talked for leaving the salary same at that point, everybody was for cutting it. Everybody.
About that.
Yep.
No, just because I don't say, that's a stupid idea, doesn't mean, doesn't mean I agree with it.
I think the original idea was that I'd have two supervisors and four people was the reason to, to change the name, I don't know.
Yeah, that was it, and, and. To push the accounts payable back to the reporter, so that she had a better handle on our budget. Nobody spoke against it, and there were many comments. Many comments.
And just because it's there, doesn't mean that's what the person won't make, it's just a possibility of going to that point, but.
Yeah, there has to be a certified CMFO. So I just make, make motion, I mean, if that's what y'all are gonna do, I don't, you have to speak up to know how, how our bail feels.
I'll speak up then, I don't think it's our job as the Board of Aldermen to be, uh, making job plans and job descriptions of the, of anybody besides the department heads. I also don't think, you know, there was, I, I, I don't see a reason for change, other than to try to get back at that department for some reason.
Because we're so effective, the way we're working.
Well, if we're not effective, let's cut speed, cut positions where it will be even less effective. So, y'all wanna have a motion and a vote, we'll vote.
I thought the intent, what everybody talked about, was that if we were going to not have, it turned, it started out was we weren't gonna replace the assistant recorder position, that was what a lot of the discussion was about. Then, it come down to, um, okay, if we're gonna change the names to clerks. And then, it, it evolved into, basically, when we looked at the accounts payable portion and all, you could divide that job up among the people, and not replace, you know, my thinking all along was that we didn't need to have a assistant recorder in a smaller town as we have. I mean, we don't, we didn't need that fifty-four thousand dollar expense, and if you look at, I had Laura run me the number of transactions and everything, that it's not a full-time job. In the private world, it's not, maybe in, in the city world, it is. But then, it come back, and it's worked its way all back, back around to where we're gonna have assistant recorder, and and we're gonna hire a person up front to do that, so basically, you know, if we're gonna have that, that job should have the certifications for it. I mean, if we're gonna keep it the same, they need to have the same qualifications. If you're not gonna keep it the same, you're gonna divide it up, then you can do the clerk thing, but my recommendation would be not hire the clerk one. You know, if you're gonna move people around inside, you know, because otherwise, you're status quo. I'm one vote, and that's my opinion.
Agreed, Mr. Peeden.
Can I ask, so, as, as a staff person, I don't understand where, I don't understand where the idea that we, a four-person office can do it on three, with three people, I don't understand what, what has shown you that we don't need that, is that, that you think we're, I mean, we're not, we don't, we're not busy enough, we're, I, I.
No, I, I'm saying, I'm looking at like.
I, I, from the outside, I haven't.
If you go back and look at the number of payable checks and the payable interest that are in there, and you're doing the payroll. You know, if you were doing the payables, and, you know, we're not big enough here to have someone that is supervising, I think the recorder should have more hands-on with the accounting in the city, 'cause, I mean, it is a two-million-dollar deal, you know? If, if you were doing the payable side, and you're already doing the payroll, I don't know why we would have to have that many people doing it, that's my opinion.
If, if, um, my biggest concern, 'cause if, if, my biggest concern is if we've got the clerk, the clerks up front, they do more than these, these salaries, if they're, they're doing a lot of, of, um, intricate water system software and managing the water accounts and dealing with that, they're, that work, I feel like if you're not gonna replace the city rec, the assistant recorder, can we at least increase those salaries to, to reflect the amount of work they're doing, I think they've been. I think they've been low-paid for a while in clerk, clerk salaries. I, I'm, I, I didn't, I didn't, I'm, I'm confused about what makes people that haven't been in our office and see us working and understand all that goes into, I mean, there's a line on a job description is one thing, but to know what goes into that, and the payables and the payroll, yes, I can, I, I will take over what, whatever I need to and figure out how to fit it in, if you think those numbers aren't, aren't, um, selective of, you know, a full position. But I want to be able to keep the clerks in the office who run the, the, the water software and deal with the majority of that. I want to keep them high-paid enough that we don't lose them, and we end up with, 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 with a staff that is, that is untrained. And, and I can pay the bills, and I can get payroll done, but we need to be able to pay, and I, I don't want to use names, it's about positions, but we, we need, we need to be able to pay those clerks to run the, to deal with the majority of the water system software and, and details, and, and that, including that, and then people coming in and all the other small things that take, that take time. I, I just, I, I want you to consider, I don't want to lose these staff because we, because we are going to lower these salaries to the point where they don't see a future, and they don't see any growth potential.
The plan was to lower the salary before anybody went into that position. It wasn't to cut somebody that's already there. And, and now we're to that point, Cheryl's leaving at the end of this month. Because we've asked every department, I mean, we've trimmed, our department's trimmed, we've departments trimmed.
Well, we, but the clerk, Watts clerk one position now, we cut thirteen thousand dollars out of it last year.
Yeah.
And that was a, a big chunk we took out to hire into a lower person to save some money up there. So that was, that was thirteen thousand dollars we took out of salaries.
That was the plan was to cut through two, to lower, pass nine, more stuff to Laura.
I thought what she did that way wasn't going to change any of the salaries, but, I mean, it's y'all on the board, y'all can make the decision. But you probably be doing more hiring if you don't.
It's really the, I don't know how much more you expect Laura to do. You, you expect her to do the grants, you expect her to do payroll, you expect her to do accounts receivable, you expect her to do everything, secretary for the police department. I mean, everybody that comes in that office goes to her. They expect her to, to handle it. Well, somebody else has to come behind her and pick up the slack. You've got two people up front that are covered up pretty much all day. You've been in that office, you know how busy we are. So would you do it? Would you go into another position and help pick up the slack? And then, for lower, for not at the same pay? I don't, none of the other departments have been cut. You didn't cut the, you didn't cut Dustin, will he come back? Is, is he doing more work than what he did before? And I don't want to call names, but, I mean, it really feels like we're being picked on here for some reason. We were looking to save money and to pass some things to Laura, because Laura does have more time than, than you got.
But she's also got more duties and more responsibilities, and anytime anybody, any of the.
You say that the grants and things, but how do you expect to bring money into the city? If she doesn't do the grants and take the time to do them, that takes time.
And anytime, because the board member needs anything, it's Laura, could you get me this, Laura, could you do that?
Exactly, every department heads that way.
And if twenty-five thousand that we cut, if we don't hire the clerk one, twenty-five thousand, is that going to make or break the city? Now, I know, the old joke, you know, everyone, eventually it'll be big money, but just that twenty-five thousand dollars, is that, is that going to break the city?
Makes sense.
But we broke by twenty-five thousand last year. Really, I have not, not heard a motion so far.
Listen, what we need to do is act like adults and not raise our voice, just because somebody has a different opinion. That's what we need to do, because, you know, we come up here and we don't show any, each other respect, and we want these people to respect us out here, okay? If, if we all act the right way, more things will get done, okay? So that, that's what I would ask this board to do, is let's table what we're talking about, let everybody think about it. But when we have a different opinion, don't try to raise your voice over somebody, just say your opinion, okay?
If I do that, I'm sorry, sorry.
Well.
I did it again, sorry.
Sorry. So let, I, I, I'll vote that we table this for a later date.
Cheryl leaves in fifteen days, so.
Well, I'm not, uh, I think, I think it's about to get out of hand right here, to be honest with you. Just my personal opinion.
If, if this does get tabled, and we've, we've been interviewing for clerk one, should I, I mean, is that on hold?
Hold. Unless somebody got something else, but.
Do you have a second on table?
I'll say.
So table the, the decision on clerk one, two, and three salaries, and table the hiring of clerk one? Is that, I want to make sure. I'm sorry?
In moving as positions.
Well, are we planning on reducing the job, is that what?
We've, we've got to vote.
Got to have a motion to do anything.
So I need to re, reword this for me, so that I can write it down. What are we tabling? I want to, so I write it down properly, and I don't create the wording.
I, 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 I didn't realize that she was leaving this month, so I, I think that we have to, I, I, I think we have to vote on it then. I don't think we have any choice, if she's leaving in fifteen days, so.
So, resend your table?
I rescind it. It's rescinding.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Or what we want to do with this? One way or the other.
I'll make a motion that we leave the salary schedule for clerk one, two, and three as is.
I'll second that.
So the, so the motion by Alderman Ward, second by Alderman Myers.
Could you please read the, read what the salaries are for clerk one, two, and three, please?
Max salary.
The clerk.
Because everybody gives the max, anyway, so.
So the minimum clerk one is twenty-five thousand five hundred, and the maximum is thirty thousand five hundred. Clerk two, twenty-nine thousand two hundred fifty. Minimum, max is thirty-seven thousand six fifty. Clerk three, minimum thirty-two thousand four hundred, max fifty-three thousand four hundred.
Clerk three salaries exact same as assistant recorder.
More discussion? Get a motion in a second.
And it, if it matters whatsoever, and I know I'm in the position, I'm not the owner of the position, it's about a position, but if you need to lower some salaries, lower the max of the city recorder, put it on the others. That, if that in any way could be possible, throw that on the table, because we need to keep, I need people, qualified people with experience in these positions, and if, anyway, it's just.
Well, I got a motion in a second, so vote on it, and then we'll see.
Okay, so Alderman Ward, Alderman Myers, leave, leave it as is.
I'm sorry.
So leave the salaries of clerks one, two, and three as is.
I've got a question. How do you determine where you're at, minimum or the max? What is the decision making on that?
Good question. It's done differently, traditionally, in, in all these three positions, because we've been, we've, we've had people in these positions for, um.
Years.
Seventeen, fifteen, twenty-two years, so we haven't hired anybody until this past year. We all started at minimum, and at this point, we're all in my, you know, at max, because it's twenty-two years. We did hire, um, then we lowered the salary, the, the minimum salary on clerk one before we hired Amber, our most recent hire, and she was hired in at minimum, twenty-five, five is what that is now. So, but, you know, we say dependent on qualifications and experience is kind of the way we advertise when we hire people. Um, but lately, I, I think a lot of the positions have been hired in at max, but, but we, we hired in our clerk one at minimum.
So who makes the decision? You do?
Um.
Or the mayor's?
Direction or.